I'm Jane Prince. I am the city council member for St. Paul's Ward Seven. And just to situate it, Ward Seven is the south, is the south half of the east side of St. Paul.
Do you think you could just give us a little bit of background information about yourself? Where you're from, what your childhood was like, or you know, anything you think people should know about you going into this?
Absolutely. Thank you, Lincoln. And one thing I should have said as part of my introduction that is that I too am passionate about working with young people. Um, I, you know, when you're, when you're my age, because I am in my, I'm sixty-seven. Um, you know, you can get kind of discouraged about things. And when I meet with young people, it gives me such tremendous hope for the future. Your generation coming up now is doing such incredible work. And especially, uh, it is amazing that the bridge makers have already filed and won an important lawsuit for young people in Minnesota, just an incredible achievement. So I'm very excited about that. In terms of my background, I grew up in, in New England, in Massachusetts, in Brockton, Massachusetts, which is very much, it's very similar actually to the east side of St. Paul. It's a, uh, it was a manufacturing city. The, um, industry left in the middle of the twentieth century. And the city really fell on her at times, just like the east side, when it lost some major manufacturing, um, corporations. And so I really relate, um, to, to my present job, my neighborhood that I love, like I do my hometown. It's somewhat depressed economically, it's extremely multicultural. And, um, we have a lot of work to do to, to bring it back. And I think that the, the future of the east side is the strength of its multicultural community. And the fact that everything we do here now to create housing opportunities and good job opportunities can lift up the people who live here and make us a really successful multicultural community. Um, I, um, went to the University of New Hampshire. I moved to Minnesota with a friend of mine when we graduated because we wanted to try something new. We didn't know anyone here, but we liked cold weather. And, and we came here in seventy-six and found our first jobs. And my first job was in local government. And I totally recommend local government as a career choice for any young people who are looking, um, at getting involved in politics or in government. At the local level, there's great opportunity to have an impact. I always intended to go to law school. And I didn't do it at, when I got out of college for a number of reasons. Um, but I decided when my, my own son was, was leaving to start his college education, I, I decided to apply to law school. So at age fifty, I attended law school, had a phenomenal experience. It's a great education. And, and even though you don't have to be a lawyer, um, to run for office, and I would never say that you needed a law degree to run for office. In my case, at my age, it gave me the confidence that, um, that I needed anyway to feel like it was something that I, that I would take on. So I ran for office when I was sixty. And, um, and, and so I'm, I'm an old baby boomer that is trying to fix the many things that my generation has broken in our, in our world and, and the, and, and the difficulties that we've created for, for the next generation in terms of. When I met Jose, I said, "The baby boom generation is responsible for a lot of what's wrong in our country." We, um, we set the, um, the climate back. You know, we were, we're such crazy consumers of everything. So a lot of the climate problem was exacerbated by my generation. And I think it's, it's terrible that when I, when I graduated from college and I got a job, that there was no question that there would be health benefits and sick leave. And, um, and even in certain jobs, you could still get a pension in a 401K plan. And now for your generation, the, the, the jobs that were available to my generation, now you're offered contract positions, you're offered, um, part-time positions and not full-time positions. Benefits are hard to come by, sick leave is hard to come by. So I, I believe that, that I have a lot, my generation has a lot to, to answer for. And, and so in my work as an elected official, I'm trying to work on issues that will reverse some of those wrongs that have been, have been perpetrated.
You, and you talked about this, uh, briefly about, about going to law school, um, at the age of fifty, which is amazing. What was, and you, and you talked about how that, that, uh, gave you the confidence to run for, for public office. Was that what, was that what sparked the interest of, of going back to school?
You know, it really wasn't. I, but getting my law degree was, you know, it was one of those things that I meant to do. I really, um, I really enjoyed it. And I have practiced law, I'm not practicing law right now while I'm on the council. But it also gives me a job to go back to when I leave, um, council, the council work. Um, no, the, the, actually, um, it was my work in local government that, um, I, my first job out of college was with the Minneapolis Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And I was working on the north side of Minneapolis. And we were selling four closed homes to people for a dollar. And then we were providing the financing that they needed to fix them up because they were all houses that, that needed major rehabilitation. And it was a fantastic job because to be able to get a job, um, helping create housing opportunities for, for first time home buyers and families in the north side and working with the north side community and council members over there. I believe now Highway fifty-five is known as, um, Van White Highway. And Van White was a city council member who I worked with, who was really a model for me of what a city council person can be and what, what they can achieve. So, um, I worked in local government for most of my career. And, um, and, and I had an opportunity for ten years to work as a council legislative aide. And so I was the single appointee of, of a council person in St. Paul by the name of Jay Benenah. And we worked for ten years together. And, and we were able to get really a lot of things done in the community. And, um, and I just loved the job. It was, it was just such a great way to be active and involved on the ground in the community, making the city work better. And so when my council person over here on the east side decided not to run again, you know, my first thought was, hmm, it's so hard, you know, running for office, even though I love politics and I had been chair of the St. Paul DFL Party, um, in the mid-nineties. I just thought, oh, I don't know if I can do it, putting myself out there and, 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 and trying to tell people why I was the right person or the best person. I just am not somebody who necessarily enjoy being the center of attention. But then I decided if I didn't run, and you guys think about this as young people, um, if a position opens up that, you know, whether it's a state legislative position or a city council position or a school board job, think really hard about putting yourself forward for it. Because what I finally decided, that made me decide to run, was that if I let that opportunity pass me by, I would regret it. And that was how I pushed myself forward to do it. And I had four opponents, um, they were all men. And, um, you know, I, I worked really hard to win the DFL endorsement. That's a, a really interesting process. If any of you decide you want to run for office and you're going to go through that DFL endorsement process, you need to reach out to me because I can definitely help you think through what, what is required there. But it's, if, that's a very, that's a very manageable process that we're very lucky to have in the Twin Cities, where you, you bring your supporters with you to that convention process. You know, you get them out to caucus. And, and that's, you know, that's how you get endorsed, is by activating people who will work with you to get through that process. So I won DFL endorsement. And then, um, two of the other candidates had said, well, they thought they were going to run anyway. So I kind of expected them to get into it. And, but I, I kept running, I, I door knocked. I think I reached all the voters in, in my ward. And, um, and then when it came time to file for, for the election in August, you know, when it's the final filing, nobody got into it. So it's quite, it's, it's quite remarkable. And this is another lesson to learn. I mean, it was quite remarkable that I fully expected to have opponents. And then I didn't. So the last six weeks of the campaign between filing or a couple of months between filing and, um, and the election, I didn't have an opponent. But I kept running anyway because I wanted people to know my name. I put up lawn signs, I did all the things that you do. Because if I didn't have a campaign, it meant that people wouldn't really know who I was. And, um, so, so what, it kind of, it's kind of a mixed blessing not to have an opponent, let me just say. Uh, but that's why you should run. You know, I just read an article today about the mayor's job in, in both Minneapolis and St. Paul. The mayor's, in St. Paul, our mayor does not have an opponent yet, or an announced opponent. I don't think he does. Um, I know there's a candidate by the name of Dora Jones that's thinking about running, but I don't know that she's announced yet. And in Minneapolis, where there would normally be a large field of candidates running for the mayor's seat, um, I believe there are only, only three, that, um, Jacob Frye has two opponents. But, um, in any event, I went way off the, so whatever you need to cut there.
No, no, and that was, that was actually, no, that was beautiful because you hit a really striking, interesting point. We talk about, uh, that there's, there's no opponents, there's no debates, there's no, there's no substance. These people are, are handed their, their, their election seats. And although that, that we, we were very fortunate with Ward Seven and your, and your persistent hard work, that is not always that way. It's some, some people, and not to say anything about our mayor in Minneapolis or in, in St. Paul, but if, but you need to earn your seat, absolutely.
You definitely do. That, you know, when you think about that mayor, mayors and council members run every four years for local office. And the election year is the one year where we all need to be challenged to, to, to speak to our accomplishments and to be accountable to the voters. And if we don't have somebody to run against, it just, it's not good for the community. And I, and I would say that to people, you know, when I would, um, when I would be at the door with people and they'd say, you know, "Well, who's running against you?" And I would say, "I don't have an opponent, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't ask me hard questions because I need to be held accountable." And it's, I, I tell you, it really, we've got to make sure with, with young people coming up like the bridge makers, um, just run for office, challenge the system. Um, it's really, it's really critically important. And one other issue that I'd like to raise, it's not necessarily an election issue, but, um, Jose, I talked to you a little bit about this the other day. As a result of Biden winning the election and the Biden relief bill just passing Congress, the one point nine trillion dollar relief bill, because Biden is a Democrat and because Democrats actually care about cities and Republicans really don't like, um, cities for the most part. And they have divested, the, you know, the Trump administration really divested in cities over the last four years. So we're in pretty desperate financial condition, um, which was not helped by COVID or by, um, the civil unrest related to the tragic, um, killing of George Floyd. So Biden, that one point nine trillion is amounting to about five hundred million dollars being given to Minneapolis and St. Paul. Um, I, I don't know the full amount that Minneapolis is getting, but, but St. Paul is getting a hundred and seventy-two million dollars to help us reinvest in our city governments. Um, and I'm, and I'm guessing, I rounded it up to five hundred for Minneapolis because I'm guessing that Minneapolis is probably getting somewhere around three hundred and fifty or four hundred million based on its budget, but it may be more than that. But young people, the bridge makers are in a perfect position to, to start raising the conversation in the public sphere, you know, through all of your outreach that you do to say, "St. Paul and Minneapolis are getting hundreds of millions of dollars to spend on reinvesting in our cities and it better be in young people, it better be in housing, it better be in, you know, the youth homelessness problem is a huge one." So these are the, these are the issues that are going to affect your generation's ability to be successful. And that really gives you a strong platform to be showing up in, um, in city, uh, budget hearings and in any kind of community forums where these dollars are being talked about. And I would even recommend that you maybe hold the first community forum on it. You know, find out what those dollars are and, you know, start that discussion and, and have online meetings. And, you know, now that we can go outdoors and, um, you know, this summer, um, I think there's going to be lots of opportunities for us to gather again in person. But you could really lead the discussion on that because we just got the news about it the week before last. The money is, the hundred and seventy-two million in St. Paul has to be spent by, um, December of twenty twenty-four. So it's money that is going to be spread over the next few years. But it really, really is a huge opportunity, um, for, for our cities to be funding what most needs to be funded, which I would say is in our, in the, in ensuring the success of young people going forward.
Absolutely. That's so, so powerful and, and necessary. Um, I'm going to, I'm going to pass off a question to, to my co-host, Lincoln, Lincoln?
Yeah, basically, I, I've heard a lot of different things coming from you here about getting young people involved in these decision-making processes and even encouraging young people to run for office, which I really appreciate hearing from you as a woman. So how do you think that you currently, um, you know, involve young people in the policies that you pursue and in decision-making processes that you have? How do you really, uh, you know, understand the needs of young people and like choose which issues are going to be most important?
Well, you know, some of the issues have kind of, um, found me. Like the youth homelessness issue. In, um, February of twenty nineteen, the St. Paul Public Schools, there was a story on Minnesota Public Radio early in twenty nineteen that said there are two thousand kids in our St. Paul Public Schools who are homeless. Um, and so, you know, that just blew my mind. And, and at the High School of Performing Arts, I think what I heard was, it was anywhere from up to half of the students who at some point or another were experiencing homelessness. And so I had read about it, um, on an online forum that I was on. And they were saying, "We've got to, we've got to, um, petition the city council to come and talk to them about this issue." And it was kind of like, "No, you don't have to petition the city council. We work for you, you're our boss and the voters of St. Paul are our boss." So I reached out to them and we, we got a group together and we put together a, um, forum at the city council where we heard directly from homeless youth and parents. Um, and one was a, was a student who had graduated from the High School for Recording Arts. But we had a really amazing listening session for city council members on that issue. And, and I've continued to work with that group where what makes it different from a lot of the discussions around homelessness at, at the city and the county is that they're made up of elected officials and people who work in government. But they aren't informed by the people who are experiencing housing insecurity and homelessness. So we have kept that group together. It's called United for Action to End Youth and Family Homelessness. And we meet, we meet, we're hoping to get back to our monthly meetings, but we're working with a lot of activists, we're working on trying to impact legislation. Um, and the young people themselves have been part of a lot of these, um, testifying at the legislature. We went up and met with, um, Keith Ellison, the Attorney General, last year. And, uh, so that's one example. Another one is when I came into office, the, um, the unbelievable thing about St. Paul was in, during the Great Recession in two thousand and eight, in order to, to deal with the, the budget crisis that the city was facing, they closed a number of rec centers. Well, so I come into office, my son's all grown up. So I wasn't keyed into what was happening for kids in my community. And when I'm door knocking, I hear that we closed three recreation centers in Ward Seven. Well, Ward Seven is the area of several, we have several areas of concentrated poverty, which were where the places that these rec centers were serving. So in two thousand and eight, ten years before I, or not ten years, but what, what would it have been? Eight years before I took office, we had seen fit to close rec centers in the areas of greatest need. So that was one of, that's what I did during my first term was I got two of the centers back open. And then we were able to substantially increase free and low-cost programming for kids at all age levels in our recreation centers. Because we had a scholarship program that people, the kids needed their parents to apply for. And kids in low-income neighborhoods, you know, their parents are working two jobs or they have a single mom who's working all the time. And they weren't, the, the kids were coming to the rec centers, but, but weren't with their parents to find out about scholarships. So they'd show up and there wouldn't be programs for them. And so we've been able to, to do a lot of work on that. And Mayor Carter's been great on that issue. And now this year, what we're hearing for our summer signups is that our rec center programs are, are just filling up like crazy. I mean, people are finding out about the programs, they're able to get, um, the, all the baseball programs are being funded by the Twins, so they're completely free. Um, and there are a lot of examples like that. But the other thing is I'm, I'm chair of the library board and, um, the, it's, it's the city council sitting as the library board. But our libraries are doing some great work with young people. And when I talk about young people, I mean, it's at, it's at all ages. Um, I don't think we have enough for, um, for older teens. Um, but our libraries are, are just incredible resources for, for students of all ages. They've done a lot of great work during distance learning. Um, they have great online programs. And, and so I think in the time I've been on the council, we've been more responsive. But we, we definitely, you know, I, I never turned down an opportunity to, to meet with young people, um, to take advantage, you know, to, to, to work with, um, you know, we have the RightTrack program, which is a youth, uh, summer internship program for working both in city government and in local corporations. And I'm sorry about the lighting, you guys, this isn't good. Um, but anyway, so that's, that's kind of how it's worked, Lincoln. It's been, um, it's kind of as, as you kind of work your way through issues. I, I will say that issues involving young people have always been high on my list because when I was running for office, um, I have a large East African population in my part of town. And I really had not gotten to know anybody before I was running for office from the Somali and Oremo communities. So when I was running for office, it was an incredible, um, opportunity for me to meet and talk to lots of people in my community from, from that immigrant background and to figure out all the ways in which we needed to provide better support and service to that community. But one of the people that I talked, I, um, door knocked was a guy who's a soccer coach in the Somali community. And he had, he and his family had started the Somali-American Youth Enrichment Club, which is a soccer club. And I said to him, um, you know, what, what is the most, what are some of the most important issues for your community? And he said, you know, "I think it's the same thing that's important to your community, which is the, the ability of our kids to be healthy, happy and successful." And I have thought about that, if not every day that I've been in office, at least every week. And again, this is what I'm talking about with the relief money that we're getting from Washington, is that if we thought about our cities, if we, if we created a mission state, statement for our city that was, "St. Paul wants to be a city in which all our children can be healthy, happy and successful", everything we did, all of our decision-making could flow from that. And if we ensured the health, safety and success of all our city's kids, we would, we would, the whole city would, would be lifted up. And, and it would, it would be a couple, it would be a generation before we had, we had really launched, you know, by launching the next generation to be successful, our work would be done in a large part. So, um, so I really think that, you know, that probably ought to be the lens that we use for spending the federal relief dollars. How is this going to impact kids in need? And how are we going to lift them up from the terrible situations that we have allowed to be created in the city of kids and families being homeless? Um, and, you know, youth employment is such a big issue. When we, when our, um, police and our youth workers talk to kids who are getting into trouble, invariably, they all say, "If I could get a job, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be doing this stuff to get in trouble." So we know that. I mean, they're telling us that as, as they're, you know, being arrested and, and, or released back into the community, "Help me find a job." And, um, you know, it won't be a problem anymore. So I, I really think that's the way this federal money needs to be spent.
Absolutely. I, and as, as, as a, as a child of the east side, I want to thank you for, for helping keeping those rec center opens because, because I definitely was, was one of those east side kids that got to benefit from one of those rec centers. And it's, it's really is powerful to, to be able to, to contribute to that and, and to Ward Seven. Um, what's, and, and as, as you're in your second term of, uh, serving on our city council, can you, can you recall back that what's one of the hardest decisions you've had to make as a councilwoman for, for St. Paul City Council?
Well, there have been a few. One thing I'll say is that when you're in this job and, you know, you, you talk to people who are in both sides of issues. And people feel passionately about their issues, whether it's, um, you know, a development, you know, a developer who's trying to, to build. Right now, there's a big controversy in the midway about a developer wants to build a, a two hundred and eighty-eight unit market rate apartment building. And the surrounding neighbors are saying, well, it's fine for it to be market rate, but you need to have some affordable units in there. We want you to create affordability in that building because if people that look like us, the neighbors, can't afford to live there, then that apartment building is going to set off a chain reaction that will lead to displacement and gentrification of our neighborhood. And, and gentrification being, you know, turning it into a higher-end neighborhood where the people who live there, who have grown up there, who, whose communities are there will no longer be able to afford. So you talk to people on one side who say, the city desperately needs housing at all levels of income. And that's true. I mean, we even need, we, we don't have a strong housing market, even for people who can pay full price.
Absolutely, we're going to go ahead, we're, we're running off to our last minute series. So we're going to go ahead and give, uh, Lincoln, uh, the final question. And then we'll go ahead and, and do our outros.
Okay. What steps do you take to ensure that you're representing the needs of and advocating for all of your constituents? And you've talked about this a little bit, but maybe you could go into the specific ways that you hear from your constituents and that you make yourself accessible at all times?
Great, you know, social media is a good one. It's a way for me to let people know what's going on, to seek their opinion on tough votes that are coming up. Um, I do do a lot, I ask, just put a question up with an article or whatever. I have meetings monthly, um, and now, of course, they're all on Zoom. Otherwise, they would be at coffee shops or wherever. Um, but I get the word out of a variety of ways. I have a newsletter, um, on certain issues. I haven't done this in a while because of COVID, but I will often door knock a neighborhood where I have to make a decision impacting what goes on there to hear from people directly. I give my cell phone number to absolutely everybody when I'm at the door. Um, you know, when I'm campaigning, but it's on everything. It's on my website and my business cards and my city website, on my emails. Because I want to be truly accessible to people. Um, I, if, when there's a crime in the community where people are feeling unsafe and destabilized, I'll call to gather a meeting in the area with the police to hear from people, to give advice about how to stay safe. Um, I have, I, you know, so I hope that helps you understand. Um, I, I try to be very accessible, but you know, none of us are accessible enough. And, um, and part of it is that the internet isn't, isn't the best way to reach a lot of people. You know, retired people or people that don't have digital access at home. So I try to be mindful of all those limitations on people's ability to hear from me and, and do other kinds of outreach.
Yeah, for sure. I love that answer and I really wanted to say that I appreciate the effort that you take to make yourself accessible. Because I, you know, I, I know personally that not all politicians do that and that sometimes it's hard for me to reach my elected officials. So I just hope you know how like incredible that is that you're doing that for your community.
Well, and always tell your electives, I'm your boss. That's what you need to say to them. I'm the boss of you, I'm the voter, you're only there because of me. So just do it. And, and even if, if a young person isn't voting age yet, they represent, every young person represents a number of voters. So don't, don't accept inaccessibility from, especially from local elected officials. I, you know, I apologize for it if people can't reach me. It's, that's our job. Local government should be completely personal.
Absolutely, um, Councilwoman Prince, thank you for your, for your relentless, uh, service and, and, and for just taking some time to, to reconnect with youth. This is living proof that you do exactly what you're preaching and I really appreciate that.
I want you to call me anytime.
We will, we sure will. Hopefully you don't want to take that, take that back anytime soon. Uh, we appreciate everybody that, uh, stopped by to watch our interview with Councilwoman Prince. Uh, there will be so much more. Thank you, Lincoln, for, uh, accompanying me and making sure that we got everything to a great start. Lincoln, any final words?
Uh, nothing else. I mean, just thank you so much for being there and for even on this call, giving out your contact information. I love that you, you, you do exactly what you preach.
Thanks and thank you and know that what you're doing is incredible. And you are leaders at this age, you are going to just totally kick butt in America. Keep up the great work. We need you, Minnesota needs you, St. Paul and Minneapolis need you to kick our butts.
Let's get St. Paul and Minneapolis back on our feet. Um, thank you so much, Councilwoman, and thank you, Lincoln, and, uh, we appreciate everybody that stopped by.